Introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before the start of tonight's meeting, we met in executive session. We discussed real estate prospects and then reviewed professional engineering services proposals. We decided on three, they will be interviewed on Tuesday, December 4th, beginning at 2:00. Everyone's welcome to attend. Next, we have a presentation from the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society and Garden of Distinction Award. Janine Mitchell, EAC.
Okay, there we go.
As long as somebody is talking to the microphone.
We have seven people on our very active environmental advisory council. Three of us are here tonight to say that in less than five years, our native plant demonstration garden has received an award from the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society. Now, if you don't know anything about PHS, I have to tell you that that is the group that sponsors the Philadelphia Flower Show every year. They are a national gem. One of our members, Marty Brooks, has been a member of the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society for 65 years.
Wow.
Yeah, and of course, he's not only on the EAC, he's one of my best volunteers. He, along with two-year-old Connor Wood, represent the age span of the volunteers who have worked on this garden. So in less than five years, look what we won. Okay, it's not very big, but it'll look great out there. It says, "PHS, Pennsylvania Horticultural Society, 2018 Garden of Distinction."
That's wonderful.
And we have a very nice certificate, which I guess we'd better find a home for. And it says, "PHS Gardening and Greening Contest. The Pennsylvania Horticultural Society recognizes the native plant demonstration garden for motivating people to improve the quality of life and create a sense of community through horticulture in the category of public space planting."
Wow.
So this is for the township, it's for the volunteers, and it's our EAC that has sponsored it from the very beginning in 2013. So how about that? Five years.
Wonderful.
And here we are. And I promise you that we will continue to improve that garden and will continue to apply for grants and awards, and you just wait and see. When that was an idea, when that was just an idea, I said it would take 20 years, okay? Wait until you see it 15 years from now.
Wow.
Wait, just wait.
Wow. I hope I'm here to see it. Thank you. Congratulations.
How were you selected? Do they come out and look at it? What's the process for it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, PHS sent two judges out. This is the third year we've applied.
Okay.
And each year, they send judges out in July. And then it takes several months for them to sift through all of the applicants. And then my husband, Steve Delinsky, and I went to a reception at the PHS headquarters in Philadelphia just two weeks ago. It was a beautiful reception. I took Steve because without him, this garden would never fly. He's the guy who loads up the truck. It's actually an SUV with all the tools, you know? And I know some of you have met him, and I'm very grateful to him for having the patience to put up with me, because I get a little too passionate sometimes. So this is for you. I'd like to hang this at the garden, but I think I'll wait till March. We'll wait till the worst of the weather is over. We've picked a great spot. But I would like to give this to you, because this belongs here at the township.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Great job.
Ann, you want to stay up there?
Stay up here.
Okay. Tree planting recognition, Ann.
Yes, I have a lot of people to thank. I just wanted to throw in a little something. As I've been thinking about this award and how great it is for EAC to get recognized for this, an image kept popping into my mind of a magician pulling the rabbit out of the hat. You've all seen that, you know, they show the hat, it's empty. He puts it down, taps it with the magic wand, or says the incantation, something, and then voila, the rabbit out of the hat, something out of nothing. But we all know, that's a trick. I'm sorry, Ken, if you didn't know that, I should have done spoiler alert. But that's a trick. You can buy it at any magic shop. The real magic is something that Janine is too modest to talk about, but this is her baby. She's a magician. She created something out of nothing. She had the idea, she got the grant money, she talked with Karen and selected an area in the park and made it happen, and in five years, has an award. That is magic.
About you, my sister.
I'm here to talk about the other EAC project. We dedicated, formerly dedicated that garden this year as one of the bicentennial events. We had a garden party. People wore hats, which was great. We had refreshments, we had live jazz, which you could hear through a lot of the park, which was really exciting. And even though the weather was really threatening that day, we had about 100 people come out, which was great. The garden looked magnificent. Janine and her brigade, she calls them her brigade of volunteers, did a fabulous job preparing it. We've had donations of plants from all kinds of people, and Schumacher Associates donated that arbor. They should all be recognized, because that's all part and parcel of that project. The other project we did was called 200 Dearest, 200 Trees. Last year, I think the board in January tasked each board and commission with coming up with something to celebrate the bicentennial. And at least you were quoted, Mrs. Lyons, as saying, "Think big." So I did. I take you at your word. And I did think big, and I did develop this program of trying to get 200 trees sponsored and planted in our township parks. To be honest with you, we did not make that goal. We only got 110 sponsorships. But we were lucky, because Bucks Beautiful partnered with us. They have a program called Replant Bucks. They're planting trees in municipalities and park spaces all through the county, 1,000 a year for the next 10 years, to help to mitigate the loss that we are all going to feel from the ash trees, the Emerald Ash Borer is attacking ash trees. There is treatment for that, but it's expensive. Municipalities probably cannot afford to foot that bill, and it's multi-year. So it's something, it's a pretty, pretty big undertaking. And if the trees are too far affected, they won't be helped anyway by the treatment. This was Denise Sezak's idea, and she was very gracious. She and I know each other through Master Gardener, and she was very gracious and said, "Use my 100 trees. I'm gonna, I'll put 100 trees in Doylestown Township." So we have 100 American red maples that are planted at Turk Park 3, basically right around the dog park. That's a really open space, if you don't know that area. So it serves as a windbreak, it'll be shade and beauty, and it has wildlife value as well. So I really thank her for that. Another big partner was Doylestown Rotary. They sponsored 27 trees, which is amazing. They also bought a park bench, but that's not actually part of this program, but they have what we've established as the Rotary Oak Grove by the Sensory Trail. They really wanted their trees together, and that's fine. And then we had 83 other individual sponsors that also contributed towards our 210 tree total. All these trees have been purchased and planted. It's pretty amazing. I want to thank EAC, because they've been on boards from the beginning. Marty Brooks, I couldn't have done it without Marty. He's a master plantsman. All of you know him, but he is just an amazing man. He probably has forgotten more this morning than I will ever know in my lifetime about trees. He's just awesome. So I really want to single out Marty Brooks. He was there through the whole thing. What species of trees we should go for, what varieties of oaks we should go for, what caliper, what would, how the planting should be done, where they should go, how they should be grouped, he did it all. He was wonderful. I want to thank Karen Sweeney, because she and I, with Marty, toured the parks to figure out where we could put 200 trees. Then we went back out with Judy Goldstein, who's here tonight, and we did the same thing. And we had felt there was room, but you can't just put trees, because you think, "Oh, that'd be a good place." There's all sorts of parameters that I didn't know about, that Judy helped me. There has to be so many feet off the path, it can't be near drainage, da-da-da-da-da. There's future things. I didn't know a lot of these things, now I know. So that was wonderful, too. Stephanie Mason's been sitting in on EAC meetings. She's been wonderful the whole way, kind of guard railing us when we veer off to wherever. She's great about that. Margaret Gazer in the front office has been keeping track of all the donations, the names, and taking care of, making sure the monies go directly to the right place. So she's been invaluable to that. Dave Tomko, who's here tonight, probably goes, "Oh, no," every time he sees me, because I just come in and say to him, "So Dave..." Because I come to him with a lot of interesting stuff. He's very helpful with the float, the Memorial Day float, and he was extremely helpful with this project. He's got great ideas and great enthusiasm. Really appreciate that. When we got to the planting, Andrea Suston, our special projects coordinator, had the registration. She contacted volunteer groups. We had about three dozen volunteers, both Saturdays. They were wet and miserable beginnings on the Saturdays, both of them, and yet we got volunteers to come out, and we really, really appreciate that. Marty Brooks gave us all a tutorial, proper tree planting, before we started. Stephanie was there both weekends, both Saturdays, one Saturday, but you were there in spirit on the second Saturday, sorry. Ken Snyder and Jen Herring were there to help plant, we appreciate that. Dave Tomko, you took about 400,000 pictures, I believe? Something like that. Or something close to that, anyway. So I had asked if I could do a special recognition, because we have three people on Dave's staff that really went above and beyond. And I'm not sure, we have certificates, I'm not sure where they are?
We have them.
Okay.
Don't worry. They'll receive them.
Oh, okay.
We have them.
So I wanted to particularly note Chris Mason, Butch Froelich, and Greg, you have to help me with the last name.
Gendresitz.
Gendresitz. Gendresitz, okay. They went above and beyond, and they were so enthusiastic and so awesome about the whole thing. It was really, really, really amazing. To have, we'd still be digging holes if they had not augured out the holes and put the trees in. It rained both Friday nights before the Saturday plantings. It would have been impossible to move those trees in. They were wonderful. I checked back on Tuesday after the second planting. They were all, they had, we, some of them needed extra soil, they'd already done that. They were staked, they were, we had put the stakes in, but they had done the ties, and they were mulching everything. It looks beautiful. If you have a chance to go out and walk at the upper end of the park, I'm not sure how that's described, you will see. There's just a whole bunch of new trees, they're going to grow and be an awesome thing, and I really thank them. And Dave, thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
And thank you for indulgence for the board. It's a week of things, saying thank you to things. I appreciate everything that you guys do, everything that EAC does, and I hope that we can all spare a thought for the folks in California. Thanks.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks for all that you did to make this happen. Okay, thank you. Any other visitor or public comment? Hearing none. We're going to get some announcements here. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 4th, at 4:00 PM. We're going to be closed on this Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Leaf and yard recycling drop off each Saturday of the month between March and December, 9:00 AM to 11:00, at the New Britain Access Road to Central Park. Bicentennial franking is one of our last events for the bicentennial. The official franking and time capsule placement on Tuesday, December 18th. We're going to start at 3:00. It's going to be here. We're asking that if you're going to come, bring a bag of non-perishable food items that will be donated to the food bank. You can purchase discount movie tickets from our admin offices. Parks and Recreation is once again partnering with Premier World Discovery for two trips, California Rail Discovery and Roman Country Roads off Tuscany. And then there are some gift-giving ideas, movie tickets, bicentennial gifts, park and recreation gift certificates for programs, park benches, mural print, dogs around Doylestown posters, and the, let me, one other thing not, that just came in today that didn't make the agenda for announcements, is the Central Bucks EMS annual fund drive is ongoing. You're going to get something in the mail for your ambulance, so make that the donation. And you can also donate by link to DoylestownPA.org. There'll be a special link to the EMS onsite. Reports from the solicitor. Oh, excuse me, I missed minutes approval. Minutes approval. The first would be the budget work session from October 16, 2018, at 3:00 PM. Everyone had the chance to review the minutes from the budget work session. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Any changes, corrections? Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Next is from October 16th as well, the regular meeting minutes, 5:00 PM meeting. Everyone had a chance to review them. Any corrections, changes? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now, reports from the solicitor.
The first item for your consideration is an authorization to advertise an amendment to the subdivision land development ordinance, so as to remove all references to signs from the subdivision land development ordinance, as they were encompassed in the zoning ordinance to resolve a rather comprehensive sign process you went through maybe six months or so ago. So I think the staff is asking the board's concurrence that I advertise the ordinance for your consideration, the effect of which, if a dot, would be to remove signs from the subdivision land development ordinance.
With that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a motion to authorize the advertisement to, to the proposed amendment to ordinance?
I'll make the motion and one comment that... I mean, we get a lot of paperwork. We've got hundreds of pages every, every other Friday. But stuff that goes out, you know, I think we need to take an extra effort to check it out, to make sure it's, it's appropriate. And my first, my only example on this one is Section 3 says, "Such decisions shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any pack thereof."
Yep. Spell check, missed the...
Yeah, and I'm, I, okay.
Understood. This is, we'll fix the...
Yeah, it'll be fixed before it advertised.
Is there a second? Did I hear a second? Okay. Any other questions? Corrections in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
The next thing is your comments and thoughts about the fireworks ordinance that was circulated to you folks, based on some conversations that took place at past board meetings. So I don't know what else to say, other than the fact that comments, suggestions, thoughts?
I think you got it right. Anybody have any questions?
I'm waiting for Rick to say he found an A or an I or something.
Well, and don't take this wrong, Jeff. I mean, we look at all this stuff. It's our job to pick up this stuff. And, and yeah, and under B4, it says, "Any first violation of the provisions." I think it should be any third violation, since two was first, three was second, four should have been third. So don't take it wrong, you know, I'm serious. Everybody here said they read it, but I didn't hear anybody say they noticed anything, so. It goes out there.
We're just not as competent as you are. Let's just get right out there and say that. You are a good wordsmith.
We know you always catch those things.
Yeah, we rely on you to do that.
Well, don't.
I had, I had a comment...
Ken's got something good, there you go.
I had a comment under Section 1 and B, under permitted times. It just, I know what we wanted to say, it's not clear that this says it. On days when use of consumer fireworks is otherwise permitted, said use is limited to the hours of 5:00 and 10:00, yeah? Except that the use of the consumer fireworks is allowed each year for a half-hour period beginning 11:45.
On New Year's Eve, on New Year's Eve, and to 12:15 on New Year's Day.
That's just referring to New Year's Eve.
That's only referring to that.
But where's the, okay, so where's the half hour between the hours of 5:00 and 10:00? We said we can only do it within a half-hour timeframe, didn't we?
No, you took that out, I believe.
Yeah.
You did, you did not limit, originally, we had it like 10 minutes or something.
Yeah.
Between, you could do it one time for 10 minutes between 5:00 and 10:00.
Right.
But we, you guys took that away.
So what can, what does the resident do then between 5:00 and 10:00? There's nothing that says only half.
They can just shoot them.
Shoot them up for five hours.
Yeah.
Theoretically, yeah.
Chinese New Year, Memorial Day, July 4th.
Yeah, between 5:00 and 10:00. But on New Year's Eve to New Year's Day, that half hour is when that can occur, at 11:45 to 12:15.
Okay, if everybody else thinks that's right, that's fine. Okay, I'm fine with it.
You're okay?
Yeah.
So with Mr. Kolela's revision, the appropriate motion to authorize the advertisement?
Yes, is there a motion to authorize the advertisement with a correction?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. October 23rd, the Traffic Commission met, and, excuse me, we voted to reduce the speed limits on four roads in the township, Spring Valley Road, East Road, Park Drive, and Campbell Drive. They were all reduced from 35 to 25 miles an hour due to them being in a residential roadways. We've had numerous complaints and, over the years, with pedestrians, bicycles, and general safety in those areas. So the Traffic Commission met, we discussed them, they were endorsed by the Traffic Advisory Committee, and we decided to reduce the speed limits. Subsequently, on November 16th, I sent out letters to residents that had joined those streets to notify them of the changes. The police department's intent is to go through a educational period first, before we start actually actively enforcing it and issuing citations. That will include putting our speed flashing boxes out there for a while, and just let the, the reduction of speed limit signs and those boxes try to do its trick. If that doesn't work, then what we'll end up doing is going out and enforcing it, probably issue a number of warnings in the beginning, and as, as we progress, have to maybe move on to citations if warranted. That, by township code, we're supposed to, the Traffic Commission's supposed to report this to the, I guess, just prior to your reorganization meeting. It seemed like a good opportunity to do it, just because the letters went out, and so I'll take that advantage and take care of it now, and just report that back to the board. The second thing I'd like to talk about real quickly is an update on what the police chiefs in the Central Bucks School District, that make up the Central Bucks School District, have been meeting with the administrations from the three high schools primarily, and on occasion, the middle schools have been there. We've continued to meet through September and October. In November, it was canceled due to weather. And just, it's a continual dialogue that initiated due through the request for school resource officers. The school resource officer, the implementation of a school resource officer is kind of in limbo right now. They're trying to figure out what's the best way to do it. There's a number of ways it can be done, by putting uniformed security personnel in the building. It can be police officers, it can be police officers employed by the schools, it can be unarmed guards. So they're trying to figure out what's the best way to do it for Central Bucks. Central Bucks School District, not, everybody may not, the public school code was amended in 2018, as it relates to school safety. So we've been meeting with them and trying to work these through things. One of the things that the Central Bucks School District is tasked with doing is threat assessments for all their buildings within the district. To my knowledge, that has been done in all the schools, including Coots. I have not seen a written report for that, but it's my understanding that it has passed Coots Elementary has. What we're doing directly with the schools, and we've already been granted additional access to the school districts, without giving too much information as to what we're able to get to and what we can't, we have been given additional access to their buildings throughout the entire district. So our officers can enter a building in Warrington Township, their officers can enter a building in our township, in the event that something would happen in the schools, and the closest officer's going to be able to get into the building first. Doylestown Township has taken an active role in trying to get our personnel, our police personnel, more involved with security threat assessments. I have an officer that's currently certified as an ALICE training instructor. That is the, the national recognized method for surviving active shooter drills. So I have an officer that's certified to do that training here in the township. And in March of next year, I have an officer that's scheduled to be, to be able to take part in the, what's called the School Shield Security Assessor Training. So he'll be able to go out into buildings. It's designed for schools, but I'm hoping to be able to translate it into commercial buildings and office buildings to assess those threats. So there's stuff that we're doing on our side to try and help our residents move forward with that. So it's kind of a, it's an ongoing dialogue. We meet once a month. I believe that there's one coming up in the second week of December.
Have the Central Bucks students gone through the ALICE training?
It's not, I, I believe they put all the students through. I know all the faculty members have gone through it. I'm not sure what, how it's trickled down to the students. I'm sure they have, that's, because that's the biggest part, making sure the kids know where to go. I know they've done it at Coots.
Yeah, so my daughter goes to Coots. They have, I believe, three different ALICE drills that they do. They have some for the lower grades, that it isn't quite as scary, I guess, and, and they do, but during the year, they do at least three different ALICE drills. One is if there's an active shooter in the region, what they, where they go. One is if they have an active shooter in, like nearby the school, and one is if there's one actually in the school, and they're all different. So I think they go through three different trainings during the year.
Thanks, Chief. Sorry you have to tell us all that, but it's good to know that we're on top of it, and I appreciate the update.
The Central Bucks School District and Dr. Kupicki's been really, they're, they're really moving forward with this. They're really have the, you know, the best interests of the students at, at heart, and they're, they're taking their, their assignment from the, you know, the commission to follow through their end.
Great. Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Township engineer?
Yes, the board has received a request to remove some excess topsoil from the Stonebarn Manor development. As is done in the past, it needs board approval, and that's why we're here tonight. I would recommend that, if the board is of the mind, to grant the request that you condition it on the township getting, let's say, the right of first refusal, having them check with the township, make sure that we don't need any topsoil before they get rid of it.
Well, they want to move it to their site contractor.
Right.
You want us to be in there before they move it to the site contractor?
Yeah, I mean, if the township needs topsoil, you know, we'll have them call the township beforehand, and if they do, then they can bring some here.
Okay.
I don't know if you're going to need 30 truckloads.
Yeah. Do we need any dirt?
Well, we accepted a lot from CB West when they redid their fields, so we have a large stockpile right now. I'm open to mind that if we can put it someplace, I would take it. It's just a matter of where we would, you know, continue to stockpile topsoil, you know, as we move along.
I know the pump track from Bike and Hike this morning talked, and they could use it at the pump track in, which, you know, we're part of with the Bike and Hike Committee.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion that we allow this to happen, so long as we have the right of first refusal of the dirt.
Right.
All right. Who's got that motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Operations, you've got to boatload this stuff.
I do, boatload. The first on the list is the CS Davidson proposal to approval of the CS Dadam Asset Management subscription. We've worked hard with CS Davidson, with Mr. Garten, Mrs. Lyons, to revise the terms of service. I think they are acceptable. Mr. Garten has reviewed the final version of the terms of service, and I'm asking for your approval for us to basically have a yearly subscription to the CS Dadam Asset Management subscription provided by CS Davidson in the amount of $2,400 per year.
Okay, is there a motion to that?
There's a motion for that.
Okay. We've seen this a bunch of times, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. Arlie Grant?
Yes, we applied for this grant back in 2017. It is to install two pedestrian actuated flash and warning devices at two existing crosswalks. It is to install two pedestrian actuated flash warning devices at two existing crosswalks. The original application was, first location was at Eastern Road and Turk Road, right by Coots Elementary, the existing crosswalk there. The second location was at Lower State Road and Wells Road at the current crosswalk. We were fortunate enough to have PennDOT had some extra money left over for the Lower State Road Trail project. They funded the one with that money at Wells and Lower State. It's currently being constructed. As a matter of fact, you've probably seen the mast arm go up, it'll be operational within a week or so. So we asked PennDOT to re-scope the project. They allowed us to change the scope to the location to Alms House Road between Turks Fields 1 and 2. I'm asking for your approval to execute the agreement with PennDOT to basically have this project proceed as a 100% refundable grant project, including engineering and construction and inspection and design.
All right, I make a motion to approve. So it's actually authorizing by resolution that I signed this agreement?
Yes, the agreement has to be executed as well as a resolution.
Is that the one from Matt Johnson?
No, that's, that is the one before that, which is at PennDOT, it's the Automated Railline Enforcement Program Project Funding Agreement.
Looks like this, Rick. Is there, there was a motion, right?
I mean, a motion.
Is there a second? Yeah. Thank you. Do you have any questions there, Rick?
No.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Connected to this project is the design. We received the proposal from Penone Associates to provide the design services for the two proposed crosswalk locations. Attached is a memo from Matt Johnston dated, whatever the date is here, on November 15th. It is for the engineering, survey engineering, construction management services, well as inspection services totaling well over $64,000. The construction is $34,000, $30,178.75, and the inspection is $14,485.80. I'm asking for your approval for this, so that they can start the design.
All right, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it, and, you know, just to be an equal.
Opportunity offender.
Opportunity offender. Matt, I mean, did he, is this his printing of Barbara's name? I mean, can he, I mean, that's just not acceptable.
Okay.
So would you let Matt know, or Stephanie, or Dave somewhere?
Oh, you mean this, my spelling? Barbara.
Yeah, that's not acceptable.
Barbara Streisand here.
No, I mean.
You are a singer.
I am a singer, yes. Barbara Rock, but I don't make her money. Okay, thank you. You are good at this, finding these mistakes. All right, there's a motion, second, with the corrections in my name. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, J.D. Bravo, additional services for the municipal complex phase 2.
Yes, and I probably don't think I printed that. There is a request for, from J.D. Bravo to provide additional construction, management, and owner services for the building. As you well know, Mr. Gallant, who is basically our representative, has exhausted many hours coordinating with our contractors and with our design team, and he had informed me some time ago that he would eventually run out of money. And we will be at that point probably by the end of the year.
Okay.
So I asked Mr. Gallant to provide a proposal for additional services. This carries us through to the end of the project. And if I could find his memo, it is in the amount, requested amount is for $33,393.
That takes us to being done?
That takes us to the end of the project. There's an attached, kind of breakdown of additional hours required.
All right, thoughts?
Well, I mean, we have no choice. It's just, again, by that, and I get it wrong, Kakachi or whoever the original contractor was, by him delaying the project 6-7, I mean, that delayed this, and I know some of this is the weather, too, but.
Well, it's, Rick, it's actually more than that. It is actually part of the coordination of all the activities that we need to stay on top of between the general contractor and all the other leads and all the subs. So, yes, weather is part of it, because that delayed, and it's going to push it out.
Right.
But it's really staying on top of all the issues and making sure the township is well informed of everything that's going on, so.
Again, we have no choice, and when we sat down with Rob, I mean, and I asked him that question, he was noncommittal, but obviously when we extended the project, I was waiting for this.
Correct, you're absolutely right.
Okay, that's, I'm fine.
Okay.
I make a motion, we execute the $33,393 extension for J.D. Bravo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Ken. All right, snow removal.
2018, 2019, snow removal, equipment with operators. We advertised and received four bids from contractors to provide equipment, which is vehicles and operators, for our 2018, 2019 snow removal. Some of these you have seen in the past, and some, one is new. The following companies submitted bids, B&amp;E Carts LLC, and they basically listed here three vehicles that they will provide at $122.50. New to the, to the snow plowing contract is James &amp; Family Enterprises LLC. However, I will say is they are the archery removal company, just under a different name, doing business for snow removal. They're going to provide two vehicles and the amount of $115 per hour. Little Diggers Excavating and Hardscape will provide one vehicle for $115 an hour, and Spear Excavating will provide four vehicles for $110 an hour. I'm asking for your approval to, for us to enter into agreements with these four providers, and it would be at Mr. Gar's discretion as to when he needs them and call them out on an as-needed basis, and we'd be billed at the following hourly rates.
Mr. Garten's?
Mr. Gar.
Mr. Gar.
Oh, Paul Gar.
I'm going to come in on snow days.
But you can call.
I can call.
All right, is there a motion to approve these four contractors for snow removal?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Just a question. Were these the only four that bid on it, Dave, did you say?
Yes.
So there's nobody else out there that wanted to do snow plowing for the township? These are the only?
Who bid?
That bid?
That wanted to bid on it?
Wow.
You're actually fortunate you found somebody, because there's some townships and boroughs that can't find anybody to do it.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Second.
Grab them while we got them, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to flipping my page on the agenda, it's moving around a lot.
Penn Builders.
Penn Builders.
Penn Builders, change orders number 3 and 4. This is additional work for the building, though I will just let you know that some of these changers have to include deducts. Change order number 3 totaling $7,716 includes the installation of felt over the Tonga Group planking on the meeting room area of the building. Additional concrete required for frost walls on concrete pads at two locations, on the side of the building, on the police side, and as well at the rear of their entrance, and an additional frost wall, okay, and again at the rear of the town, the police department. That is change order number 3. Change order number 4 totaling $17,810.33. It was the deduction of door hardware and door kick plates. That was an $8,296.58 deduct. The additional cost for framing and dry walls in the ceiling, as well as deduct for changing the ceiling in the admin break room, and additional cost for a concrete slab in the carport. That's the large number, $17,191. So that's what the change orders were for, I'm asking for your approval. I'm sure there's probably some questions you have.
Is there a question on the concrete slab for the carport? You had looked at other alternatives in there, didn't you?
Correct.
Because that is the highest number.
This is actually a carryover from phase 1. What we didn't want to have happen is, this is for the final paving under the carport area, the open area of the carport. And we were going to do this in phase 1, and what we really decided to do is to wait till the building was built, so we didn't have any elevation problems. We did some grading, regrading in the area. Actually, Mario, we asked Mario to look at that area, and we did some drainage as well. That was done, and now we are at the point in time where we're ready to finalize that paving. Instead of putting in by-two-minute paving, which is actually is more expensive, we received the estimate from Penn Builders, the by-two-minute paving was $20,684, and the concrete will be $17,000 and change. So by waiting and by working with our builders, we've actually reduced the cost there by, by some amount, savings.
So was the slab in phase 1's budget?
It was proposed to be paved in phase 1's.
Paved.
And it was actually removed out of the, out of, as a deduct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change orders 3 and 4 for $25,000, 26.33.
All right, sir, second?
Second.
Rick? Questions?
No.
Call in a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Just a, just a comment on that. Some of these items that are listed here, and there's a number of other items, too, that have been popping up, and which I wanted to share with the other supervisors, that we're going to be sitting down with Phillips and Donovan to go over a bunch of these issues, because some of the stuff isn't, we thought would have been worked out a little differently. So we're having a meeting next week with them on it, just to kind of iron out some of the issues, so.
Good, you answered my question.
Okay, I'm calling a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Oh, we already called a question, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. Sorry, that was a duplicate. That was weird.
You should have voted the same way, anyway.
Yes, exactly. Sorry, staff, change your votes. I got interrupted. Go ahead, Stephanie, you're up.
You have a memo for reorganization boards and commissions. We do have vacancies. We'll have three vacancies on Ag Security, three on Friends of Kids Castle, one on the Planning Commission, and one on our Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board. There's a question on the status for the Central Bucks Senior Task Force, is whether or not that'll continue or not.
We don't, we don't know that.
I, well, I'm looking to Jen, because she probably has the most information on that.
Can we just look at that for next meeting?
Yeah, we'll put it in there, yeah. But I just want to let you know, we're going to be advertising for those vacancies and everything. And I just have one other thing for your information. New Britton Borough sent over an email to me. They are looking to, they're going to be hiring Gilmore to do a traffic study at the Covered Bridge that goes between New Britton Borough Township and New Britton Township. And New Britton Township looked at it last night, and they're fine with them studying it. We look forward to receiving any results they have, whether or not putting, doing nothing, putting up a stop sign on the Borough side of the bridge. Right now, there's one on the township, on the New Britton Township side, our side. We're installing a traffic signal on the bridge, à la the Jack Mountain Covered Bridge in Hamilton Township. Not familiar with that, but they're going to do an analysis of that, we'll get that report, and we can comment at that point in time. So it's just for your information.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, supervisors, and I'm first up because I'm listed first. You received a photocopy of provision on our municipal code, disturbing the peace within the limits of Doylestown Township. And I asked that it be replicated so that you could see what authority we do have. This board has gotten out front of informing our residents on the opioid crisis, and it's gotten out front on changing the culture of recovery and the stigma of opioid addiction and drug misuse. It's gotten out front with the Parkland massacre and alerting our local, you know, police and getting us involved in whatever the schools need, and Chief reported on that today. Since we last met, we had 11 people killed in a synagogue out in Pittsburgh, and I can't help but think, what would this board be doing, what would we be saying if this happened at Temple Judea? And the reason why I bring this to all of our attention, to believe that antisemitism doesn't exist in this polite community of Doylestown Township is naive. There's racism, there's antisemitism, there's prejudice against sexual, you know, differences. And we, as a board, as individual members of this, of this board and of this local government, are responsible for making sure that we keep our residents free from word and conduct, tending to cause disturbance of the peace, obscene and indecent language and actions that would endanger the safety and comfort of our residents. And we have the authority to do this. How we do this, I'm not quite sure. I think making sure that hate crimes are reported, investigated, and then we offer police support to our Jewish communities is one way, one place to start. But as individuals, representatives of this local government, as we tell our children, when you see something, if somebody hurts you, and you feel bullied, or you feel threatened, you're going to self-hurt yourself, self-hurt, tell somebody. When we're in an airport, we see a package, we're supposed to say something, suspicious conduct. As individuals, when we hear hate in speech, our friends, and our neighbors, and our acquaintances, it's our job, it's our duty, it's our responsibility to say something. And this, I think, starts with us and filters down the community, but we have to say something. We just can't ignore this, jokes, or slides, or sites, and all these other comments that come about. And I say this because several years ago, I was sitting in this chair, sitting in this chair as chairman. There was, there was polite conversation on an issue in the audience, and they didn't come out and say Jew or anything like that. It was innuendo, and it was code. And I didn't say anything. I didn't say anything because I didn't think in this position of chair, I had the right to say anything, because my, my position is to maintain order. And I didn't say anything, and I went home that night, and I was so angry, and I was so upset, and I was so ashamed of myself, and I never want to feel that again. So, as an individual, and as a member of this community, and as a member of this board, I'm going to say something, and I ask us all to do the same. So that's what I wanted to say about this. And we have, we have authority to do it. It's keeping the peace, it's protecting our residents from hate. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
And if I could comment, I wasn't expecting this, but you're absolutely 100% right. The most discriminated group in the country are Jews, more than minorities, or by far any other discrimination, it's Jews. And I, and I don't think we do enough to remedy that, so I echo and applaud your comments.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have. Okay.
Who's next?
Ken.
I'm sorry, I put a damper on the party.
No, that's all right, no. I was just playing back in my head some of your words, yeah. The next piece is about the survey, just to level set for everybody. We had issued a community survey on communications in the newsletter, and a variety of ways on how people could respond to that. And we picked that because we said if we can't communicate to people, it doesn't help us for EAC, doesn't help us for Bike and Hike, it doesn't help us for any topic if we don't know the right method and means to communicate. So we did, we sent out the survey, and Judy is here to, she did a great job summarizing it, which you have seen in your packet, so she's going to go through that and explain that, and if you have questions, we can do it. But then we also want to talk a little bit about what do we do about it? What are our next steps here? So Judy, if you would, please.
Sure, you all have it in your packet, so I'm not going to go through the whole summary.
It just shows that it's people who are my age and older who even read the newsletter.
Amen, that's exactly.
We like getting paper.
And I have to laugh, because I read everything that comes in from the township, and my husband is trained not to recycle it anymore before I get a chance to see it. But most people do one of two things when they get correspondence like that. They put it aside to read later, and it never gets read, or it's not even opened. I think the majority of our residents must be getting their information from somewhere else, because we do have an active, vibrant volunteer community. But I do have to say that we had 97 respondents to the survey, 22 were paper respondents. And just so you all understand what that means, this was in the newsletter, and there was not, not a link to click on, but a link to go to, to the website and do it online from Survey Monkey. 75 people did it that way, 22 people did it the long way. They actually had to get a, you know, a writing implement, fill it out, tear it out. They actually had to get a, you know, a writing implement, fill it out, tear it out, address an envelope, stamp it, take it to a mailbox, and send it in. So those 22 were very engaged residents, the 75 are engaged residents, but then the other, you know, 16,900 residents, some of which are children, and probably were too young to do it, but chose not to respond. It doesn't mean they're not engaged, doesn't mean they didn't see it, didn't read it, it just means they weren't engaged enough to respond, or didn't feel they had a problem. We all know that most people respond to surveys or questions when there's something they want to say, and unfortunately, in our society, people usually want to say something when it's not positive. It's less common for people to say, "Yeah, I want to come to a public meeting and sit down." Like, tonight, we had some great, good feeling things, but usually people come out because they want to complain about something. So I don't think it's to say that no one cares, it's just that no one cared enough, or not enough cared enough, to respond. But Barbara's right, most people were on the older end, 40...
Mature end.
I didn't say that, I said my age and older.
Well, you know what? And 71% were my age or older. 43% were over 61, 71% were, if you add the 51 to 60, and the over 61 together. Unfortunately, when we look at our population, 43% of the respondents were over 61, only 26.5% of our population is over 61.
Oh, so we're more active.
Yes, we were, yes, more active.
You're over 61?
We did hear that from the population that responded, they prefer print media, they didn't prefer the online as much. And one of the surprising things is that, when people do go to get news in case of emergencies, the respondents seemed to favor Facebook. And it wasn't necessarily the township Facebook, I think people are into the Doylestown groups on Facebook, you know, those of you that are on it, I heard a loud boom, what do you think that was? You know, fireworks every night, where are the sirens going? And people are engaging each other in the online community. So it's not necessarily accurate, it's just reaching out to people. So this is telling us that people that responded, which again, take it what the grant saw, it's the older, it's a more mature population that responded. Sorry, guys.
How many ways can you say this, Judy?
All right, over 61. But, we're hearing that, not necessarily are we doing a bad job communicating, the information's out there, it's whether or not people are engaged in responding that they're getting it. I think that we do need to find ways to engage more of our younger populations, not just in surveys, but in our boards and commissions. And that might be a way to engage more of the population in general.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions to Judy?
Just a comment, when we developed the President Feedback Strategy document, we said, what, the path that we would go, we would put surveys together, analyze the data, as we did here, and then report it back. But it also means, what do we do next? And one of the next steps, we had identified as an option, was, put together a focus group of the different groups, to try to better understand, to make sure we, because if you just read, if you just accept it as it is, we don't need to do anything different, people don't, they're not engaged enough to worry about it, so why even tell them anything? I would kind of like, I would suggest we take the other approach, and try to understand that problem a little differently, and get people who did respond, people who did not respond, from different age categories, and all different criteria we can think of, but get a small focus group together to better understand, are there things we should be doing, or are we going to just leave it go by the wayside? I'm not ready to give up on it yet, I'm more of the mindset to say, let's get a little bit more, and then if the focus group doesn't bear any fruit, well, then I guess we're done. But I would like to take at least to the next step.
Okay. What does that look like? What does that look like?
We haven't sat down to figure that out, but it's really going through the different groups that did respond, and people who didn't respond, and trying to get a collection of those various audiences together, to say, okay, you're in this age category, and you did not respond, tell me why. Is there a different medium that you would use, that we're not using today? And maybe there is, maybe there's, I don't know. But I just want to cross all the bridges before we say we give up on this.
Did we put a link out to this survey on Facebook?
There were links on Facebook, there were links on Twitter. There were announcements at your public meetings.
Right, no, I just wanted to make sure there was actually like a direct link.
Yeah, in fact, the links on the Doylestown Facebook page, then, the Doylestown Township page, were picked up and put onto the Doylestown groups, I think, a couple of the Doylestown groups.
Even one that I, kind of jumped out at me, if you look at question eight, it had to do with emergencies. How do you want to get emergency information? 41% said email, Facebook was 41%, 40% said PICO. Well, PICO's never going to tell you anything about an accident, or a spill, or any other emergency, so it's just odd, some of this data just isn't making sense to me, so, like I said, I just want to understand.
Because they're old.
Because we're old, yeah.
And only 16% looked to Readybucks, which is something that really does get out to emergencies, so I think it's telling us that in general, we need to do a better job.
But the nice thing is, is that we received a number of emails, so we have communicated, thanked them, and we also told them to go join the various groups, and they would be the ones that we could reach out to, and invite in to meet.
Yeah.
See where it goes.
So, if the rest of the supervisors are okay with that, I would like to take that to the next step.
I have no opinion.
Okay.
I think we provide enough access to what goes on here. We hammer away at announcements, we have everything on Facebook, and Google Group, and television, and newsletters, and stuff like that, and it's available to people. You can't like, make them read it.
See, that's the whole issue, if you look at, how many people watch the TV station?
Not many. I know.
So what does that tell you?
It doesn't, it says they don't want to tune in to us, I mean, who would? I mean, we're kind of boring.
We need entertainment.
Too much TV anyway.
We're not a reality TV show. But, you know, we have every, we have every possible medium available for people to get information about this township and what's going on here. They read it, or they don't, they access it or don't, I don't see the point of like, belaboring this, but, if everybody else is okay with it, just count me in right now, because all the things going on. Yes, go at it. Thank you. All right, Jen, you have anything?
Just an update, we had our Parks and Rec meeting, and discussed again, the building, that they're going to be coming to us to propose, we don't have a date on that quite yet. But there are many options that they're pursuing right now, and they told me that they were going to present options to the board. And the EAC meeting that I was able to attend, was chuck full of information and wonderful.
Look what they've done!
They're just amazing, I mean, Parks and Rec is amazing too, but EAC, I mean, the agenda is, you know, chuck full, and everybody...
Of green things.
It's amazing. So, other than telling you that they are a bunch of busy people, there's not much to share there. But I also wanted to thank you Barb, for talking about that hard issue, with the violence going on in our country today, and the issue with hate crimes particularly, we see it, whether it's hate crimes because of race, or gender identification, today is actually Transgender Remembrance Day, we identify that they are a very susceptible group to homicide, particularly women, trans women of color. 22 homicides so far this year. But it spans on a lot of things, I mean, we've seen a lot since our last meeting, between shootings at hospitals, at bars, at synagogues, we've had pipe bombs sent to people that had different political views, and this, I'm hoping that maybe we can come to some way of working together to stop this kind of, this kind of attack on each other, because we're all here to work together. I mean, our whole board works together, we have different views, and I believe I can speak for the board, that we would, there's nothing we would like less than to see some of this hate coming to Doylestown.
Thanks. Rick, you have anything? More?
You skipped over Ken.
Ken went.
Oh, that was it?
Yes.
That was it?
I, and I'll bounce back to Ken for a minute, but, we talked about this before, that our newsletters get dropped off in bulk, at Stonington Farms, Neshamani Manor, and a few other places. And would that help, do you think, if it went directly to their apartment, would that help them reading it, as opposed to remembering to take one as they leave? Like the hurled, you know, there's a stack at the Y, do I remember to take one every time I'm there? No. So, do you think there should be something, we should pay the extra $50 and get it delivered to them, as opposed to in bulk?
No.
Well, you guys are ventriloquists, very good, Judy, I didn't see your lips move at all, yours either, Ken, there's, well, that was very good. Try this again.
Sorry, Ken, your thoughts on that?
We, Judy, Stephanie and I briefly mentioned that, that that is something we need to better understand, and how we manage it. So, to answer your question specifically, Rick, I don't know, I think we need to go talk to some, have them, a member of the focus group, to understand, how do we get the news into their hands better? So, but it's one of the points we did talk about.
I only said no quickly, because delivering it to their homes versus having it in bulk, even if every one of them read that newsletter, it's not dramatically changing the results of the engagement with our members. That's all I was saying, with our township, so. And it wouldn't be possible at the Neshamani Manor.
Yeah.
Chief?
I just want to make one comment about this whole social media thing. The hard part of assessing it, in my opinion, is, you sent out the survey, I guess in the newsletter, is that where it went out? That's one media, we have, we have seven different, off the top of my head.
We did all this.
It went out to every one of them.
But the bulk, the main one was through the newsletter, because that gets to each 6,000 households.
Does that reach every residence?
Yeah.
It went out to Google Groups several times, because I myself, I myself received at least three or four emails about that. It was on Facebook, on the Doylestown Township Facebook page, and then shared on at least three other Doylestown Community Facebook pages. It went out on Twitter several times, because I get the reminders from that. It was announced at every meeting here, and it also, I saw it somewhere else, too.
And it was on the website, if you want to go to the website.
It was on the website, on the top, on the banner, that was it.
Did the survey ask which media they founded in?
Yes.
Yes.
Which ones they prefer, that's what the question was.
Actually, it was what they prefer, not where they found the survey, where they preferred to go for their information. And ironically, the newsletter wasn't the top one.
Okay, thanks, Judy. Anything else, Rick?
Yes. First, I'd like to congratulate all the winners and the non-winners in the last election. As those of us who have campaigned in the past know, it is a grueling process. There are no losers, just candidates who did not appeal, for whatever reason, to the majority of the voters. As I mentioned, when I was elected, re-elected six years ago, I will not run for reelection next year in 2019. I believe in term limits, there are many other people who deserve the chance to be a township supervisor. To that end, as I've mentioned in the past, my three committees, Water, Sewer, and Planning, have significant impact on the future of our township. The Sewer Committee is in the beginning stages of ascertaining if there is a need somewhere in our township for public sewers. This is a long-term project, that will not be completed until I am long gone from this board. I have asked, and I will ask again, that the supervisors, especially Jen and Ryan, the newly elected, recently elected supervisors, take over at least the very important committee of the sewer. It is of little benefit for me to continue as liaison on the Sewer Committee. As far as sewers, you have seen the updates in the township webpage, as far as Pebble Ridge Project, which is progressing slowly due to weather, but all indications are that the project will be completed on time. And then DTMA met with a favorable response from a residential area in this Pebble Ridge Project, to extend water lines to their neighborhood, it was Stony Lane and Woodbridge. Last week, those residents and the DTMA met right here, and the indication, it was a very, very good group, and the indication from these residents was, they would like to have the DTMA extend water main to their area, even at an additional expense to them, over and above the sewer project. And my other, that's Sewer Water, and my Planning Commission, we have a full agenda coming on Monday, next Monday, right here, at the Grasso Project. You know they're going to, or maybe you don't know, we did receive the material, that they're looking at putting in a senior living complex there, so, if you've got some time, Monday night, right here, the Planning Commission, you'll hear more about it. Now I'm done, thank you.
Just a question on the Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
Because the agenda was so full, you had, we had sent out letters to the residents to say, show up at this time?
Yes.
Now that the one is no longer on the agenda, how are we gonna?
We're gonna, they've got some other things to discuss, so we'll fill the time with some other issues.
Okay, so that one stays, that stays at day 25, okay.
Yeah, we're not moving, that was like, too many people when getting the letter out.
That's what I was asking the question, very good, thank you.
Mike, you have anything?
I just, real quickly, I wanted to bring it up when you were talking, chief, but I received more calls, texts, and emails, in my over six years on the board, last week, when the speed limits were changed, in like, sheer happiness, so, you've made a lot of township residents happy.
Made me happy.
Yeah.
I hope it works.
Yes, so.
All right, thank you, everyone. Keely in Sioux Sidewalk Trail Construction, New Britton Borough, we got a letter here from Sam Bryant, the manager of New Britton Borough. What do we need to do here? And what does, did the Bike and Hike weigh in on this?
Yes, this is very exciting for Bike and Hike, because they've got grant money to be able to extend that trail. As you know, we stop at Lampost, they're going to continue it down, Keely, basically coming all the way through Sioux to Butler Ave. I wanted you to know about this, because one property that they will be speaking to is a township property, so it's their project on a township parcel, we're aware of it, they'll be reaching out, and I just wanted everybody, in case you got contacted, to be aware.
Thank you. That's it? No action?
That's it, no action required.
All right, talk about birds, do we need any more discussion about birds? We got this beautiful...
Oh no, we're talking chickens, sorry.
Chickens, birds.
Not migrating birds, chickens.
I beg your pardon, we're talking about foul birds.
They're all foul. Go Judy, go.
What are we doing with this?
Thank you, Judy.
Do we have to do anything with this?
Well, we're hoping to be able to incorporate it into the cleanup ordinances.
All right, this is for cleanup ordinances purposes. Got it?
Right, so I was here at your last meeting, talking about the cleanup ordinance issues, and there was one subsection of livestock as an accessory use on residential properties, and that was raising of poultry. So we were asked to go back, look at it, do some more research, which we did, and that's all attached in the memo, and as part of the memo, we had a little change proposed to the H11 raising of livestock, which is an accessory use for residential uses. Sum it up, minimum of one acre for raising of poultry, five chickens permitted for the first acre, one additional for each additional quarter acre, you need five acres for a rooster, runs, pens, hen houses, coops need to be 50 feet from the property line, any structures relating to the keeping of poultry has to be to the rear of the residence, facility for storing manure or feed has to be 75 feet from any property line, can't illuminate the exterior of hen houses or chicken coops, and you need a written waste storage plan.
Okay. So what do you need, Judy, what do we need?
Authorization.
We need to, direction on incorporating this into the quotes cleanup ordinance, and that'll be added to that, the rest of it's ready to go, it's been back and forth amongst all of us, so, if we incorporate this, I'll advertise it then.
I think we should incorporate it, and a very nice job.
I agree.
Nice job.
Very good, Judy.
Thank you for your input, I think it worked out well.
Yes.
Well, is that a motion, Rick?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we incorporate... I make a motion that we incorporate Judy's letter dated.
October 30th?
10:30, 18, into the ordinance cleanup and council.
Second.
Create a draft ordinance for. All right. There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Thanks. All right. Next thing, can we move, can we move the bird recognition up?
Sure.
Because no reason why you guys have to sit here and wait about.
Come on up. Please. It's going to be really quick.
So I just want to tell you a little bit about the year of the Bird Proclamation. That's before you. So 2018 was designated as the Year of the Bird in celebration of the 100th anniversary of the migratory treaty Bird Act, which was created to protect rapidly declining bird species from the plume trade, hunting, and habitat loss. That's like 100 years ago. It has been credited with saving billions, yes, billions of birds, numerous species, from extinction, including the wood duck and the snowy egret. There are continued threats to birds, including habitat loss, pesticides, climate change, and environmental disasters especially, with more than a third of North American bird species under high conservation concern and at risk of extinction. Here in the township, we've had a long and wonderful history of support for birding and birds in our commuting, including the formation of Bucks County Audubon Society in 1969 by Dr. John Mertz, who was a professor, dean, and also vice president of Delaware Valley College, and also Ray Hendrick, who was our township's resident orthologist and chairman of the EAC. Bucks County Audubon Society is thriving, will be celebrating their 50th anniversary next year. The township also joined the Audubon's Bird Town program to promote conservation and community-based actions to create healthy and sustainable environments for birds in our residents. Through this program, over 50 bird boxes for cavity nesters, which include kestrels, screech owls, and bluebirds, were installed, and this work was recognized by receiving the Kestrel Award in 2015. Ray Hendrick continued this work and expanded to over 300 boxes. These bird boxes are still being used by our resident birds and being maintained by our township. Our Bird Town also continues to lead the community, offering informational tables at events, hosting bird walks, et cetera. Our township also continues to support sensitive bird species in our area, including the ovenbird and woodcock at Hearts Woods. I just want to put a little face to a name. So that's these guys. This is the ovenbird and the American woodcock. So these guys are in our Hearts Woods, where in 2015, the board approved a resolution to enforce a 1997 ordinance to protect these species during nesting season. This year, also working with Bucks County birders, Audubon, and New Britain Borough and Township, educational signage will be installed at Pine Run Reservoir to help protect other sensitive species and ground nesting birds, including the eastern meadowlark, bobolink, savannah sparrow, grasshopper sparrow, marsh wren, and others. And here's some more pictures, more faces to names. So this is the marsh wren and the eastern meadowlark. Beautiful gorgeous birds. Also, the practices of reducing mowing, meadow restoration, and installation of natives along the Nieman Trail support important bird and animal habitats. And then finally, the development and installation of the now award-winning native plant demonstration garden through the leadership and vision of Janine Mitchell in the EAC, created with the donations of thousands of plants and hard work of hundreds of volunteers, is being used to educate our residents about the tremendous value of planting natives as well as reestablish important habitat. So finally, this proclamation is an important opportunity to continue to show our support with other townships and communities that we recognize the presence and value of birds and have the will to protect these habitats now and in the future. We hope you will support the proclamation. Thank you for your time.
Before you go.
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
No, go.
Who wrote this, whereas?
This is from Audubon, PA.
Do you have a edit?
Yeah, I got an issue.
Oh, okay.
It says, whereas climate change is the number one threat to birds. Now, I don't know, I looked at the U.S. Fish and Game website, I looked at a couple other websites, and they don't even list that in the top 10. They have habitat loss as the main one, you know, development, et cetera, flying into building glass, flying into communication towers.
Rick, where do you see that? Where is this state this? What part is it?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seventh, whereas.
Climate change.
Climate change is the number one threat to birds. We can, we can change that, add some of these other things. I agree with you. It's not just climate change. It's certainly, you know, habitat loss, pesticides.
It's not even in the top 10, yeah. And that's why.
Window strikes.
Did the EAC look at this?
We did look at this. Yes, we did.
Well, just add the other things.
Yeah, I agree.
And that being one of them.
Sure. I agree.
Well, it's not even one of them.
Climate change is. No, actually, climate change is really critical for migration timing. It is a really big problem for birds.
Sorry?
Climate change does really greatly affect the migration, the timing for migration. So there were sometimes, some of the birds are moving earlier than when plant material is coming out and providing nectar and food sources for them.
Causes them death?
It does. It actually causes big problems for them with nesting.
All I'm saying is I found it nowhere. I spent.
Really? Okay. Well, we definitely.
That's why they're the EAC.
Maybe they make mistakes.
Well, no, no, no. It definitely is part of it. If you look at the National Audubon Society site, it will definitely state that climate change is critical for bird migration and impacting that.
And I agree.
If you would send me that link, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to.
I agree, but I think what we can do is add the other potential threats.
Sure, of course.
Not one threat.
Right, of course. I agree.
That's fine.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Well, if you present that, the edit to us, we'll look at it for our next meeting.
Okay, fantastic.
You don't have to come back, but just, thank you.
No, thank you.
Whether whereas is after that, it says 2018 also marks the next 100 years. It marks the beginning of the next.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
No, good. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for your work, and I appreciate you taking the time to put this together and bring it to us and wait through this meeting to do it. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the Calen subdivision, PennDOT occupancy permit for Bike and Hike.
We have the resolution that actually is there.
So in order for them to get their permit, we have to accept the Bike and Hike maintenance.
Maintenance, right. And as part of the land development was that they were going to put, install that. It is in the road right away, and it will become part of our overall trail system for the maintenance. They don't have a homeowners association there, so we would be responsible. So we'd look for the board to approve that, and we can execute that resolution.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Good night.
Good night.
All in favor?
Aye.
Doylestown Hospital, Anchor Health, PennDOT travel signal modification. There's a PennDOT resolution for our review and approval.
Yes, as part of, excuse me. I'm sorry. As part of the land development for the hospital, there's a requirement that they work, remember, one of the conditions was for them to work with traffic engineer to be able to redo the signalization, and as the new requirements under PennDOT, we have these new forms that they require us to do.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the, the application for this traffic signal application or approval?
I'll second it, and assuming I'm looking at the right thing. We are sending in an application, and did we type this in? Title of witness?
No, it came over.
Did it come in? Township manager Secrecy? Secreary?
Secretary.
We typed that, right?
No, we did not. It came from, no.
So that's third form? We can't change that?
No, it can be changed.
We can, we'll, it's in the bill. We'll fix it.
We'll fix it for them. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Rick, again.
Well, it's something that goes out in the public. All the other, hundreds of pages, I don't really care that much about because it's inter municipal.
Okay.
Something goes out.
There's a first, is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Where are we? Tabitha? Tabat?
I think we have.
Tabat.
Tabitha.
While Mr. Clace comes to the podium, the applicant proposes to subdivide tax parcel 9-22-115-1 into two lots. The overall lot measures approximately 10 and 1/4 acres. After the subdivision, Lot 1 will consist of 5.91 acres, with existing structures. Lot 2 will consist of 4.36 acres. Plans before you prepare by Gilmore Associates, they were dated September 21, 2018. Your Planning Commission, as meeting held October 22, 2018, recommended approval of the final minor subdivision plan subject to certain conditions. I shared these conditions with Mr. Clace. Should I review them with the board, or do you want to ask him questions, or?
You can review.
All right.
And we have any questions.
Compliance to Boucher &amp; James Review Letter dated October 17, 2018. Compliance with the Pickering Court, Simmerson Review Letter dated October 12, 2018. Compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission Review Letter dated October 10, 2018. Compliance with Michael Baker International Review Letter dated October 16, 2018. Applicant has requested waivers from the following provisions of the subdivision land development ordinance, Section 153-20C, parentheses 10, with respect to showing existing features. They would provide an aerial, but with a further condition that the adjoining tax parcel will be noted on that photograph. Next, the provisions of Section 153-24B-2A, with respect to widening existing streets along the frontage. Next, 153-26A-3, requiring the installation of curbs. Next, 153-25C, with respect to the installation of a bike and hike path. And lastly, waivers from the provisions of 153-34C, with respect to locating the trees. They'll provide a tree sampling survey to the township planner to meet that obligation. Brick patio with a pergola will either be relocated or removed to comply with the zoning ordinance. No aspect of any accessory structures, including any garage, shall be used as a residence without prior approvals, having been applied for or obtained from the township. See to all permits improvement agencies having jurisdiction, including the Conservation District. Applicant pay all expenses associated with the application. Applicant shall pay a fee for recreation with the one new lot in accordance with township requirements, and the plan shall be ADA compliant. Mr. Clace, do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, I do.
Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the final minor land development?
I make that motion to approve the final minor land.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck with it. Now, you're all going to leave, right?
Thank you for sitting so patiently through the rest of this meeting. Good night. You have a beautiful child. Love them.
What? Wow.
Oh, no. You're busy.
I know she's watching.
You're welcome. Good luck.
All right. Budget presentation. We all got it.
We all got it.
Any, you want to just give us a brief on it? Just like two sentences? Three sentences, maybe?
She didn't.
We know what it is, right?
You know what it is. First, we have the revised 2018 budget, which revenues totaled $14,724,859,000. We used $3,255,765 of reserves. Our expenses were $17,980,624, with a fund balance of $12,167,361, and that was based on 11.875 mils. The projected 2019 preliminary budget is revenues at $16,280,462, using reserves of Expenses at $21,117,690, leaving us with a fund balance of $7,330,132. This will be based on a 12.375 millage rate. We are reallocating millage in the general fund, in our recreation fund, and adding half mil to our debt service fund. Obviously, the big issues, we have reformatted the budget this year, and this will be online tomorrow, so you will, anyone at home can go on and view the whole budget in its entirety. In addition, obviously, the MS4, the completion of Phase 2 of the building project, and of course, a lot of work has been put into the five-year projections, which include a bridge replacement, which also address the Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge paving projects as well. And that's sort of the Reader's Digest version. I appreciate everyone's assistance, the finance department, our budget analysts, of course, the board of supervisors, and our Ways and Means, all working together, and the department heads to bring forth this budget to you.
Nicely done.
It was an excellent summary. We also, the, and maybe I missed it, about our continued contributions to the pension.
Yes. During the budget work session, the board addressed reducing the interest rate on that from eight, an assumption rate of eight to seven and 3/4 percent, and continuing to contribute a little extra to the pension as well, so that, working with our new pension advisory committee, to work towards getting that to 100% funded.
All right. Thank you. All right. Questions? Comments? Otherwise, we'll consider a motion to adopt the preliminary budget and authorize its hanging till final adoption.
Do you need a motion to amend the 2018 budget?
I know, you always, I always forget to do that. We need a motion first to amend the.
2018 budget.
2018 budget.
I'll make that motion to amend the 2018 budget.
You know why? Because it's not on here, that's why.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, now, could I? Is there a motion to?
It's approved and authorized and be posted pursuant to Second Class Township Code.
We call it hanging, but posted.
I'll make the motion that we post the budget according to Second, what'd you say?
Second Class Township.
Second Class Township Code.
And I'll second that, and I want to, Daniel, I'd like to give my comments. You know, it's a two-part process, the budget, which we all worked very hard on, and that's why I'm approving the hanging of the budget. And then in December, we're going to vote on the budget, and also if a tax increase is necessary. And there are two separate and distinct issues. The budget covers all the essential products, projects, everything we've been talking about will be accomplished. The second portion is the tax increase, whether it can be accomplished without a tax increase. And as I mentioned before, there's no doubt in my mind that we can complete next year with no increase. It's, it's, it's not only in my mind, but in past history demonstrates that we can do that. And this goes, Jen, I mean, you're the deciding vote, and you, you are, I mean, I think you're going, sure, you're going to be the deciding vote. You were the deciding vote in the preliminary budget, so I am assuming you're going to be the deciding vote in whether there's a tax increase. And I want you to keep in mind, as you review all the budget stuff again, and as Judy mentioned, 25% of our residents are senior citizens on fixed income budgets, we have to take that into consideration, struggling young families, so tax increases are very important to them. So please take a look at the budget, all of you.
Come on, Rick, you don't think we looked at this budget ad nauseam?
Rick, I do appreciate the weight that you put on my vote, but, but I have only one of five, so I don't think I'm...
Just in response, though, I mean, I hear what you say when you, you think they're separate activities, and in my mind, they're not.
They're not, I hear you.
Because we're not only, we don't only look at 2019. So I agree with you, could we do everything we wanted to in 2019 without a tax increase? Of course we could, but that's not the only thing. The other part of it is, is our five-year view, and we have to keep that in perspective. So that, to me, they are not distinct or separate activities, they are part and parcel to the whole process.
What do you, what are our thoughts about, in full transparency, giving an overview of what that five-year outlook looks like, if...
It's, it's in the book.
Okay, so we're, so they'll be able to...
Yeah, it's in the book.
Yeah.
And it shows a 1.3 balance in five years.
It shows, yes, that's what it does, right.
And as the board will recall, we're trying to sustain our targets.
Which is, you know, $375,000 more than we've talked about for the last 50 years, as far as, so, and let me just finish, and I agree with you about the five-year projections, but if I'm wrong, we've got four years to correct it.
Yeah.
If I'm right, we're not going to change and give the money back to the taxpayers and give, or lower the tax rate, that's just not going to happen in realistic terms.
Yeah.
Well, in realistic terms, don't forget, we have to provide a wrecked building, too. That ain't going to happen, because we're nice people and somebody's going to build it, and we have to actually provide that for our residents.
That's another whole issue, and I'm not so sure we're going to provide it, so.
Well, okay, well, that's, again, just, it's, we're going forward here, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
All right, call in a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right, moving on.
Before we move on, because this has to do with the budget, can you have those copies? The Pension Advisory Committee met yesterday, and while we had a verbal recommendation from the pension committee as to what that discount rate should be, this is the document from them for their recommendation, and it goes through, one is to lower the discount rate from eight to 7.5, which we have built in, revisit discount rate assumption annually, and make further adjustments necessary, and consider, continue doing the additional payments in lieu of changing discount, just more payments to pension. So this is, again, a way of documenting what we said we would do and should be part of our budget process every year as we go forward, so I've asked...
So you want to adopt, this is like a policy, or is it just sufficient that we have this in our...
Well, it's from, yes, every year, we should be doing this, looking at our additional payments, getting recommendations on discount rate, and that, that's how we manage that pension going forward.
All right, I agree, all right, thank you. Could we call the question?
Yes.
Moving on, Eagle Scout property, wait.
Pine to Pink.
Pine to Pink, asked that you approve this proclamation, recognizing the efforts of Pine to Pink. In full disclosure, I actually delivered this proclamation on Saturday already, so if you don't authorize it, I'm going to be really embarrassed, but I attended the event, it was held at the Bonton.
Fox and Holly.
Fox and Holly, with a pop-up store. They actually have a place for community inside that facility, where you can come together. A lot of people were there, Pearl was there, it was a nice presentation, Keith Fenimore did a wonderful job, and they, and they're going to expand next year, and someone was there from...
Peddler's Village.
So Peddler's Village is on board for this next year, too. As you know, we had a little bit of pink coming into Dorseton and the township, and then the borough was pink for a while, but they, it seems to be a good foundation, it is a 501(c)(3), I verified that, so, anyway.
I make a motion, we accept the pink, Pine to Pink.
Proclamation, second. All in favor?
Aye.
See, I didn't get to say everything I wanted to say. All right, moving on.
I thought you were done.
Kenneth Volmer, his Eagle Scout Court of Honors, December 9, 2018, and they're looking for a proclamation, you know, you know...
Troop 71 Eagle Scout, I make a motion.
Right, I mean, he did...
I'll make that motion, do a lot of good stuff.
Admiring his efforts, where is this place that, anybody know the location of this?
I don't know what the Dodgers' American Revolution is.
I just looked at the invite, and I killed them. I looked at it here, and it doesn't say.
What's happening at James Laura House, the actual?
Yeah, the James Laura, no, she's talking about the Dodgers, where the, yeah, restoring the historic monument, I don't know where the, in Dorseton.
No, there is, just, there is one on State Street, like across from the farm, there's this monument there that somebody's been working on, they put a bench, they put some plantings in, could that be it?
I don't know.
It might be, adding park bench, yeah, trimmings, yeah, maybe it is.
Really, really, really beautiful job, anyway.
Dodgers' American Revolution, yeah.
Is there a motion?
There wasn't a motion.
There was, is there a second? On favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Fee permit waiver request, we have two, one from Mercer Museum for a lot of money, $900, Thoughts?
You said anything hundred thousand dollars was acceptable, so I'm in favor, I make the motion, we waive the permit.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then Dorseton Health, the Ann Silverman Community Clinic. We don't know how much this is.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on that.
How much is this?
I think we need to know the amount.
Absolutely.
It doesn't say. I think it's at that, I think it might be upwards of it.
It doesn't say, we need to know how much it is, the usual fee it says.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jen, we can't, because we ran into this years ago, I think it should...
Yeah, I'll double, I'll double check, because, oh, renovation of the carriage, that's the other one, yeah, he didn't give me one.
I didn't see that.
Sorry, we'll table it and...
All right, move the table.
I make that motion, we table the Ann Silverman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Treasurers' Report for November 20, 2018, is there a motion to approve the report?
Move to approve Treasurer's Report.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill's List for November 20, is there a motion to approve? Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to dispense with the announcements, because Stephanie has to go to Michigan now.
She's got to get in the car.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Sticking it out.